Alright, let's call the meeting a word. Start off with last month's minutes. Anybody have any comments, changes? Get a motion to approve?
Majoris on?
Almost there. Any comments? All in favor? Weir's uncommon? Comments? There was a sign up list back there for anybody in the public who was interested. You get a couple names? Does anybody else want to add their name? Alright, public comments. We're gonna keep it to four minutes this month. Last month we gave you all a little bit of extra time. We're gonna try to keep it to four minutes today. So, first up is Donna.
Majoris?
Majoris. Is that right? You're up.
Oh, same old, same old, just like last month. I mean, nothing changes with him, except he did get arrested for missing court. So, that helped my life, because he's been a little bit quiet. But otherwise, we still have speakers moving and houses rocking and, you know. Same old, same old.
Okay, thank you Donna. Jim Stewart?
I'll go to sign it in.
Oh, no, it's just if you had any comments. No? Okay.
Not right now.
Well, this is your chance. Otherwise, not be next month.
First time I've been here, I wait next month.
Rhonda, you put a great thing on Facebook the other day. And I would say, as far as people's thoughts on whether or not this is a good idea and that idea, you gotta input. And I think the input you got was fantastic. I would say, most of the people were for a noise ordinance. We had our few that weren't. I would say probably 7% yes, 30% no. A lot of people feel the same way I do, but there's definitely gotta be some kind of stipulations, which I know is what y'all are working on if this gets passed. You know, it's not gonna be, you know, black and white. It's gonna be, you know, different things. And I'm still up for the first time, get a warning, second time to get a call, the third time to put a jail.
Okay, Donna, just to be clear, we haven't actually passed with creating a noise ordinance.
Right, I understand.
Okay. So, old business, we're just rolling the new business. Sheriff here, I guess. So, we have the sheriff here today. He's here to address questions to the board. He won't be addressing questions from the public unless he opts to do so, because someone will be tired.
Unless what?
Unless you opt to do so at least today. So, I guess we're just looking for some history to how this, what the department's experience might be.
Okay.
With the reason we're here today.
It's my understanding, and as far as history for me, is I believe it was that county commissioner people kept coming to different commissioners and complaining about noise. And a lot of them was because the sheriff or the sheriff's office wasn't doing enough, was not doing anything at all, or they understood that we couldn't do anything. And so, I believe it was Commissioner Haven suggested to come and let us know at the commissioners' meeting. And at that meeting, several people did come and complain about the noise. So, I believe it was Mr. Haven and Mr. Corbin, I believe, suggested that they task the planning board to look into the issue. And then Matt Mason sent me an email and asked me if I could come and speak to the board. So, that's a history that I know. What I was asked to do was to get some information, numbers or complaints that we've had, examples, I guess. And so, in fact, until about 3:30 this morning, I worked with our dispatchers to try to break down into some more information. And so, I've got that, and I've got that for you today. And I'll just read to you what I have. Basically, what I did is I went as far back as 2011. And I broke it down individually years, 2011, 2012, 2013. And then the first January, March, April, May, June, July, August, September, the first 10 months of 2014, up until 3 o'clock this morning. So, the numbers are is, when somebody has an animal, or not an animal, has a noise complaint or nuisance complaint or whatever, they call 911. And then my officers, or the city officers, or the Highland City officers are dispatched to that. For our calls in 2011, it was 13,443 calls. Of those, each call is broken down into call signs, 1 through 100. 1080 is a domestic, 1080 is a domestic, 1079 is a disturbance call. Well, the problem with the log of 13,443 calls, 518 of those calls were logged in as 1079s, which is a public disturbance. Now, after speaking with the dispatchers and finding out exactly what different public disturbances is, we found there was a wide variety of public disturbances. Your local town alcoholic that's in the roadway can sometimes be listed as a 1079. People arguing out in the parking lot of some restaurant or parking lot of Walmart can be classified as a 1079. It could be classified as a 1080 or domestic, but a lot of times, it's classified as a 1079. So, what I did is I asked the dispatchers to go in and query each of those calls, those 1079s, and break it down by the words. For instance, loud noises, noise, music, neighbor. And so, they broke it down, each cat by that. So, when we got done, when we got done with the 1079 calls, when it comes down to people like Ms. Majoris that's calling in, in 2011, of those 13,443 calls, less than 1% was related to noise complaints, loud music, neighbors raising cane. 13,337 in 2012, again, 1079 calls were less than 1% related to the same noise, music, loud neighbors. 2013, 14,125 responses, calls that my officers responded to. And again, less than 1% of those calls were related to noise. In 2014, so far, we've had 11,239 calls. And again, we have less than 1% of those are noise related. Now, the problem is, a lot of those 1% calls, as Ms. Majoris, did I say her name right? Majoris? A lot of those calls of that 1% calls are Ms. Majoris calling, a couple of her neighbors calling. So, she gets tagged for every one of those calls, multiple calls. And not including all the calls she makes to me and emails to me, because she calls me a lot. And I feel for her. I do, I feel. But the problem is, the number of those calls are very limited. I talked to both of my sergeants last night, who, one of those sergeants is always working nights. I have two shift sergeants that work nights. And so, I spoke with them individually about it. And before I even had these numbers, they told me how rare it was for them to get those calls. And that a lot of times, it is somebody having an issue, but getting multiple calls from Ms. Majoris and different people like that. Now, on numbers, I will tell you that in the numbers, it looks like it's not a big problem. Okay? And I would have to say that it's not a big problem, that we respond to. Now, I'm also not the one living next door to it. So, to Ms. Majoris, it's a huge problem, and she's having to deal with it. All sorts of calls we get to. And as I said at the county commissioner meeting, we have to be careful when we respond to these calls. Not violating the law, because they have loud music and they're disturbing Peggy Patterson or they're disturbing Mark West. Doesn't give me a right to go there and constantly say, hey, your neighbors are complaining, please turn your music down, because they don't have to. They can tell me to go jump in a lake. They don't have to, because there's no ordinance against it. Nine times out of 10, people do. First time we go out there, we tell them that they was, sometimes they're very polite about it, and they take care of the problem. Rarely do they cuss us out, but they still turn the music down. They get upset, because there is no ordinance, but they turn it down anyway. It's that 1% or so of those that will refuse to do so. And I'll give you a couple of examples of people that I've felt incredibly sorry for, and we couldn't do anything. Some of you may have even seen it on WLOS, because they did a big story on it, because again, we weren't doing anything. It's always our fault. But basically, what happened is you had an individual, and if he hears me, he's probably gonna say I didn't get the story exactly right. So, I'll excuse myself for that right now. But if I remember all the facts correctly, this individual lived on several acres of land. And his next door neighbor had a dog. And that dog was coming over onto his several acres of land. And he didn't like the fact that this dog didn't know how to read trespassing signs and was coming onto their property. And as a landowner, he has a right. If he doesn't have dogs, of course, he has a right. If I don't want somebody's dog on my property, I have that right. It's my property. So, I understand that. Well, what he did was to retaliate, was he took speakers, huge speakers, ran speaker wires out to the other side of his chicken coop, and would play this horrendous rap music with filthy language in it. And would play it day and night, and he'd leave town. And he would leave, and that music would play blasting on the other side of his chicken coop. And when he was home, he could barely hear it, because of the way the speakers were set up and it was on the other side of the chicken house. But the property line was right there, and so their house was 20 feet away. So, here they were, working in the local system here and listening to this, and there was nothing that we could do. And that's happened a couple of different times, where people knowingly are harassing people, knowing that there's not a violation of the law. Ms. Majoris is a prime example. She's got a neighbor that's driving her absolutely bonkers, therefore driving me bonkers.
Thanks, Robbie.
And I understand that. And I take every call you make to me. And my officers always go out. Now, I will say that my officers will also tell you, especially if somebody gets upset at them, that you need to understand, we don't have an ordinance, we don't have any laws being violated here. And you need to understand, when you say you're gonna call 911 every five minutes when this is going on, you need to understand that you could be charged with interrupting the 911 system yourself, because you're tying up an emergency response line, and you're reporting things that aren't illegal, and you're being told they're not illegal. So, be careful there. And that doesn't always go really well when they're told that. But we do tell them that sometimes. I could give you other examples, but that's just one. That's happened multiple times. And I don't have the solution. I'm not the one that makes that solution. I'm not the one that makes or recommends or denies ordinances. That's the Board of County Commissioners. And I guess they put it off on you all to review it and to make a recommendation back to them. Any questions that you have with me? Yes, ma'am.
Well, do you feel, I mean, this is just, you know, personal response, that if you had a reasonable, moderate ordinance, like there are for some other areas in western Wisconsin, would that help the situation, or do you think it would make it worse? Because suddenly, people would feel, I mean, would it, if you had a simple ordinance, yeah, I do have something I can enforce, would that be a benefit to you?
If you have an ordinance that, now, I know, in fact, I would almost guarantee you that everybody sitting around this table has probably gone on the internet and looked at ordinances in other counties. And what I will tell you is that while on a computer screen or buy a copy that you receive by fax of an ordinance, it may look perfectly fine. But when you go back and you talk to the administrators or the chiefs or the sheriffs, who are actually having to enforce those, and I'm not gonna name any of those counties, but I've done that. And what you find out is, while it looks really pretty on paper, what you've done is you've created a document, just like our legislation, where there's loopholes in it. And these individuals find these loopholes, and it gives them more power. You've created a document, you've, you may have fixed her problem and keep her very happy, but what you've done is you've tied the hands of a lot of other people who may not believe in having that ordinance or don't have a problem with their neighbors, next door neighbors, dogs barking at feeding time, or all night long, or whatever.
Could you give some examples of those, or would you feel better if we got that from?
I think that's your job. I think that's for you to, I don't wanna name those administrators. I've talked to some of them.
No, I wouldn't ask you if you need, if you just kinda give us some examples of how things are left out, or how these loopholes are created.
Well, for one, the decibel readers. You know, our county commissioners will tell you that, you know, we've got equipment that officers aren't getting now. And now, you're gonna put in an ordinance, possibly, that will require us to buy decibel readers. Then you're gonna have the problem of, is that decibel reader gonna have to be calibrated? Calibrated each year? Is that officer gonna have to be certified on that? And that officer's gonna have to be trained on that. And you all know, you're businessmen, businesswomen here in our town. And so, you all know that anytime you get a piece of equipment, they're gonna make some kind of requirement for some kind of training of it. And so, you're gonna be utilizing that. And then you're gonna have an officer that's out there, instead of answering the domestic call, they're gonna be out there holding a decibel reader to see if it's loud enough or too loud, or not loud enough.
Well, just for reassurance, that we were given three examples of regional ordinances, none had decibel readers. So, that was more subjective than that.
Do all of them require a law enforcement response? Or is the individual able to go file the proper documentation to file a complaint against that individual?
They all require law enforcement response. It's basically based on unreasonably loud, disturbing noise.
How do you get around that?
Remember that idea.
If I go out and I think it's too loud, I'm a deputy, and I think it's too loud, but then another deputy comes back next week, and he doesn't think it is.
As the old saying goes, what's noise, you need to use my ears.
Yeah, I'm not sure that, you know, I don't know.
All the ones we've looked at have it just being any unreasonable noise that somebody complains about.
And it probably, if I had to guess, I guarantee at least one of those are one of those that looks really good on paper, but is not being enforced because of loopholes and issues that they're having.
Robbie, you're, less than 1% have those right now? Is it just dogs or babies, cow barking, or?
No, it's, none of them are animals. It's less than the 1%. Some of them are .79%, but less than 1% is either that they're calling about their neighbor being loud, or they're calling about.
How they being loud, though?
Rooting them, give them some examples.
You guys would does die if I put this in his computers. And you saw when I go through.
You mean?
The music, is it him personally? Him yelling, him on his own property. Now, see, that's where you run into the problem. A lot of people say disturbing the peace. The problem is, if you're on your own property, you can't be disturbing the peace. You're on your own property.
Look, Robbie, I question that.
Now, every one of those, every one of her cases could be handled. I think there's 30 people in that trailer park. If that association would step up and hire an attorney, spend $1,500 between the 30 people, if you could get 30 people to do that, good luck to 30 people to do it.
I told you the other day.
But you can't. I mean, there's ways for them to do something, if they have the financial means to be able to do that. Simple, you go hire an attorney. Anybody can be sued for anything, unfortunately. But they can take civil actions against them and gain progress far quicker than you all will put together an ordinance and get the commissioners to implement one.
Okay, so the less than 1% noise could be somebody hollering or.
Excuse me?
I was trying to get down to what the less than 1% really is.
The less than 1%, as I've said, is people making loud noise, people, neighbors yelling, screaming, hollering, obscenities, or just raising cane.
Or going out there, revving their engines.
Loud neighbors, loud revving engines, loud just being loud, and music.
Music.
Someone that had concerns about roadway noise, in particular, loud motorcycles. Are there DOT regulations or laws that are already in place?
We don't have anything to do with that.
I'm not asking if you do, but is the Highway Patrol?
You go through some areas, you know, where they say you can't use your Jeep or your truck during certain hours or in town kind of things. But that's a local ordinance.
Yeah, see, I was telling you about, Lake Burton's a, some lake over towards South Carolina, where a community where the motorcycles can't come through there loud at night after 8 o'clock, and all sorts of.
Would you say most of your calls are after certain, like, during certain daytime hours?
All of the calls that I looked at, and I didn't go through every single one, but I only, and I went through a bunch of them, but every single one of them was after 11 or 12 o'clock at night. And I found one that was about 4:15 in the afternoon. Somebody complained that they played their music all day long, and it's driving them crazy. Now, it's getting up into the late afternoon or evening, so they started calling. But most people are.
That was mine. We'll talk to you one day.
During the daytime hours?
Sorry, 4:15, went through to midnight, and then all night.
But it's not just.
Most people are complaining after 11, reasonable time, in my opinion. It's reasonable for people to raise cane and complain about somebody being obnoxiously loud after 11, 12 o'clock. I mean, that's ridiculous.
So, what would happen if we had an ordinance saying that, you know, unreasonably loud, disturbing, raucous noise, which threatens the comfort, health, peace, and safety of a reasonable person? And your deputy goes out to make a judgment on that? Is that?
Damn, we're the fall guy. We'll be the bad guy, you can guarantee it.
Well, I think you led the side.
Either the guy that's got the loud music playing's gonna be ticked off, or Ms. Majoris is gonna be ticked off.
I'm not manager. I apologize to them for calling that.
Yeah, I know.
Potentially create an ordinance where they can file complaints in court.
Some of the people that's been watching a lot of this online, I have one.
None of them are here, by the way. It's frustrating. If you got a problem, come and let it be heard.
They have a person that seems to go to one of my rentals up on the hill out there in October. They've got this boombox in their vehicle. They go in and out till 3 o'clock in the morning, just short orders, seems like about every other night. My neighbors have been complaining to me about that loud shake-the-ground radio on their car. But by the time you can call anybody, they haven't called in, by the time they can call anybody, they've done and gone back down the road.
Well, good, they're gone. It's not a problem anymore.
They're waking them up every, every night. And the other thing that I had, talked to a lady today, one of our outstanding citizens, and they said their biggest problem was the neighbor evidently was running a puppy meal or something across the road with a lot of dogs in it, and stuff, and kept them up a lot at night. And they complained to them about it. So, now they're scraping out a place on the other side of the house closer to the neighbors to move their dog on. So, if we just had something that would give them some grounds to get some justice other than going through the court system.
So, none of these noise, the glued dogs, right? Just the dogs barking?
Yeah, none of these that I've talked to you about has anything to do with dogs. We are lucky, and we no longer answer animal calls. We have animal control that handles that.
But a lot of these ordinance we're looking at, it's got some half-dogs.
Do what?
I think that's part of the equation, though, cause these other municipalities that we're looking at other counties, have dogs.
But he's saying we need to talk to animal control and find out.
Yeah, I know, yeah, but it is an issue.
I actually could've got that information for you, so I just don't, but I didn't even. I try to avoid those issues.
Robbie, I got a question for you.
I've dealt with it for a long time.
Do you know of any instance where there's been a nuisance complaint that has then escalated into retaliation where then charges had to be filed?
Oh, yeah, we've had recent that, yeah. I'm not gonna name no names, but there's somebody in here that's been involved in that, that's been retaliated against.
I wonder if, excuse me, I wonder if we're required to have proof, like I have right here, of the nuisances that takes place, and why he was arrested. On my camera, I have film, like you can't believe, of things that this man has done.
Donna, I'm sorry, this is the board's opportunity to ask questions.
Robbie, would we say that, based on your local experience here and conversation originally, that a different noise ordinance is considered one without place power, potentially can be more effective?
I would ask you, if you even consider an ordinance, please look for an ordinance that you would be able to utilize someone else other than a law enforcement officer to deal with it. In fact, I would recommend that if Ron Haven has a problem with my loud music at my house, and he lives next door, instead of me going to the magistrate and filing a ordinance violation and then having to be tied up in court instead of dealing with other crimes, let him go and be sworn to the testimony. And it'd be firsthand information as far as the problem, and then let them battle that out in court, instead of the three of us battling it out in court.
And I guess the potential downside of that would be that one of the parties decided to escalate that in the form of some sort of total harm to the other individual. And in that event, there's protection in place, through court laws to protect.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, as soon as they cross that threshold, that they're violating the law, whether they're the person playing the music, or they're the victim of the harassment or the noise, as soon as one or the other crosses that line, I can assure you that my guys are gonna arrest them if they have the grounds, because they don't want to not deal with her issue and then have her call me, or anybody else call me, and concerned that my guys aren't doing something. And then them get in trouble for failing to do their job. They're gonna act, because they wanna solve everybody's problem.
One additional question is, in your mind, is there any one or two bullet points that, of ordinance, that if we get into the ordinance, that needs to be in there, that would be a criteria for determining whether or not that noise, whatever it is, needs to be toned down or addressed? In other words, talking about, you know, taking some kind of meter, meter that sound or the vision, and I don't think, you know, obviously, that's not a very good idea. But is there any criteria in your mind that my noise needs to meet before it's a violation?
I think, two things that I would recommend to you all, and again, I'm not here to say to put in an ordinance, I'm not sitting here to say not to. But if you all do put in an ordinance, a couple of things that I would say is, please look for every way possible to let the victim and the perpetrator be involved without law enforcement, or the accused, the perpetrator. Also, look at a time issue, a reasonable timeframe for there to be a noise complaint.
When you say timeframe, you're talking about in a 24-hour period, or repetitive? Or both?
Well, if.
Late at night.
Late at night, you know. And again, I'm not the person that's listening to it all day long. I might have a different opinion, I guess.
We're asking here.
But I hope you all look at a timeframe, whatever that timeframe is. I think you should really research what time is a reasonable time for it to be a problem. And also, to try to not have law enforcement tied up on those complaints. It's the same as a domestic. I was on the phone when I got here, because my officers didn't arrest somebody that was accused of domestic violence. Problem is, that individual had no signs of an assault. And the other half is saying that they assaulted them, so it was going back and forth. And we're the same way. If, you know, if we get to the house and the music's turned down, we don't know for sure if it was blaring or not. So, let them battle it out. Let Mr. Haven go and file a charge, let him be sworn to the testimony. Because he knows more than my officer do, because my officer did witness. The other thing that I would suggest is a warning, that nine times out of 10, when we go to people's houses and tell them to turn it down, or, we don't tell them to turn it down, we ask them to turn it down. Nine times out of 10, they do. They either read it in the paper, or say, yeah, but as soon as you leave, they turn it back up. I can assure you, that person's gonna call and complain and say they've turned it back up. What I'm saying is, nine out of 10 times, when they say that they're gonna turn it down, we don't have to come back up, because they left it down. They know they've ticked off their neighbor, you know, and, and most people don't want to be a nuisance to their neighbor. I, one, if I knew that my dogs are keeping my next door neighbor up, I'd do something to quiet my dogs. My music was too loud, I'd do something to quiet my music. But people are different. Those are the things I would suggest, if you all were looking to, I would really ask people to really consider those things.
Well, if, if we don't include you in, in the ordinance, would you still go out on the call, though?
Yeah, we, we can, I mean, we're, because the first time we go out there, what we're gonna do is we're gonna go out there and say, hey, Ron Haven, could you please turn your, uh, music down, your neighbor's a complaint. And then at that point, if they call back into nine-one-one and say they're not turning it down, you know, we can give them a copy of the report that we, um, warn them, even give them a, a written warning, eleven fifteen or it's two-thirty in the morning, please turn your music down. So-and-so has complained. This anonymous stuff, no complaint should be allowed to be anonymous in this. They should have to put their name down. If they're gonna complain and they're gonna go to court, they need to put their name down. And a lot of people don't want to complain and be known, they don't want their neighbor to know that they're the ones that are calling. They need to, they need to step up, and if it's a nuisance to them, it's a harassment to them, then you have to have a victim of a crime or a victim of a violation. So you, you need to be named, that person needs to be notified, you need to shut down. And if they don't, then if they call back in, they'll be told that you need to go and see a magistrate or ordinance person or whatever county decides to do.
So that's the only part you, you will, y'all to be left out of is the filing the charge, more or less?
And tied up in court.
Right, you, you'll, you'll do the actual call, you'll go out?
Absolutely.
Okay.
But if you were to, your officer were to come out and they wrote a warrant, and say, you know, if you do this again, maybe you're right to charge, go to court and you might receive a penalty of five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars. It might stop a lot.
I think, I, I, that's a legal, that's a legal question or a legal number to give. But if I'm not mistaken, I think there's only a certain amount, a dollar amount that the, that the county could actually make as a penalty.
Five hundred is at least.
Okay, then it's, and that's probably, probably the maximum.
So the system where we would try to leave you out of it, so I go to file a complaint with, let's say, the magistrate wherever the case may be, and then I have to wait for a court date, is that right? To get an order to stop the music?
Correct.
And that could be months?
Uh, no, it'd be within, within a few weeks. But, but what, what would be told was, is those individuals will be told that, you know, Ron Haven didn't turn his music down and he's continuing to blare. You need to document that, and when you go to court in five weeks, you can show the judge that, hey, you know, we asked him, we warned him, we asked him to turn it down, and we have to come and file this paper, the reason we're here, Your Honor, it's not because we're being mean, it's because he won't stop. In fact, here we've got five weeks of music all night long, and that's evidence against him.
That's true.
Can that be filed in magistrate's court or does it have to go to-
That's, that's another legal question, I'm not sure about ordinances.
We'll talk Chester, see, he wasn't gonna make it tonight, but he's possibly gonna be here next month.
But that's a good question to ask, but I, I believe so, but I don't know and I don't wanna be-
Could all of that be done under the current system of these systems?
There's nothing to, for us to be able to do it.
But you were talking about earlier that thirty of the neighbors could get together and-
That's always been, yeah, absolutely.
So that is a possibility now?
Yeah, and I've told everybody that ever calls me and complains and raises cane that my guys are not doing enough, I always tell them that you're able to go and hire an attorney and, and civil action against them. Uh, you'll, you'll, it'll get done quick, especially right now, it'll get done quicker than passing an ordinance.
It's your top priority, I don't know.
Or if they go to the magistrate.
At, at a, at a start, you're looking at, you know, one attorney I talked to this week, if I, I told him if I came to hire you with this problem that I'm having, and I gave him a certain example, he said fifteen hundred dollars. Problem is, it's fifteen hundred dollars now, but what if Ron Haven?
Fights back?
I'm using Ron Haven because I got, I didn't wanna keep using you, so I'm using Ron Haven. But, uh, because he, 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 he's fighting, he's fighting it, so we're gonna keep going back to court, it's gonna keep getting continued and that attorney's gonna keep charging you, and so it could get very expensive. Homeowners associations have it even better because you can have multiple families, um, possibly take part in it. Yes, sir.
All right. What is the actual cost of a noise ordinance for these other counties? Does anybody know what would it cost you as a department if Macon County placed a noise ordinance? What would it cost you, set of equipment, more officers and everything else? Do you have any ideas?
I, I don't think that, to be honest, I can't answer that. But what I would say is if, if you had a noise ordinance in place today, I don't know how it would cost us more money to do what we were just talking about because we're already answering those calls.
Right, but you're still-
Anything, but maybe those people that you're dealing with, her problem, that problem may be resolved. And instead of the twenty times that we've dealt with it, we've got ones, so save money there.
John, I think that might be a better question for the commissioners to hash out.
There you go.
Right.
Because I think if we're gonna look at if we need it, I think the cost to this board should really not be the question.
Right, well, I mean, we-
No, it's probably thinks it would be, you know.
But notice when I said that, media, notice that when I said that, I started off with, I really don't know the answers to that, but I would think.
Well, I mean, we've, we've been talking about a few other counties and municipalities here with their ordinance and stuff like that. It'd be pretty nice to know what the citizens are having to pay taxes to handle another individual's problem. So you're talking about an individual that don't have the money or the means to hire an attorney. But then you're gonna turn around and put the burden on the rest of the county taxpayers to solve that problem, is that?
You're talking about if you use the sheriff's department?
Well, yeah, but, but at the same time, if you don't use the sheriff's department, what is the cost for that individual to go file, the paperwork for the complaint at the magistrate's office?
Something we can research.
I mean, I think the biggest thing here is we're talking about, and I, and as I said the last meeting, I sympathize with these people. I understand, they are dealing with something that nobody should have to deal with. But when you look at it, it's less than one percent of the population of Macon County that is having this, or the cause of this, and-
Thing you have to think about though is how many other things are we already paying the sheriff's department to do that don't benefit any of us in this room at all? Far more than one percent of the call-
I would hope there's nothing that we're doing that doesn't benefit you, Mr. Hagen.
Make your neighbor strange driving drugs off the road.
Yeah, that's personally healthy.
Yeah, I'm not wrong, I'm really careful when you start talking about the-
Personally.
Yeah, I understand.
But I think that's a good point you made and a good question that you brought up in that, you know, if you have an ordinance and, you know, you're gonna make the call anyhow, if, if we decide to start doing a warning ticket, you know, and you have to produce that document, I can't imagine that would be a horrendous call, that would far outweigh-
The twenty trips.
The other nineteen trips that you, that you potentially wouldn't be making.
True, well, let me be the devil's advocate there, though. Now, while we're only getting one percent of those calls, how many more calls are we now gonna start getting because there's now an ordinance in place?
Thirty, so. I have- First six months of budget, I think. Because, and I'd be curious what has, I don't know, something like that, Highlands started their ordinance, what, several years ago? And at first, I used to see a lot of complaints and you heard about them pretty regularly. I, I haven't seen one in a long time.
Have you looked at the town of Franklin's ordinance that they have? Yeah, it's not been enforced in many years because of loopholes and issues that's been made.
Now, they enforced it a fair bit.
If you had a complaint-
I'm sure they have.
If you had a complaint, you actually had to put your name on it, people feel strongly to put their name on. They're probably gonna learn a lot of that from there, too, regardless.
It makes sense that people wouldn't, they wouldn't have to go back out, it's awful if people were checking that ordinance seriously, do you think they would do that?
That's normal.
Honestly, most of them, when we go out and, and, and tell them that what they're doing is causing a problem, they, they take care of it. It's that small percentage that doesn't, that really caused, causes a, a real problem. And I honestly feel sorry for them, you know, that they have to deal with that.
But those are the people who are doing maliciously, I mean, intently trying to make their neighbors mad.
I mean, it's like we're trying to describe when it becomes a crime, you know, they're just a disturbance.
We talked about the financial burdens on the county. The other thing that I'm concerned about and all my officers are concerned about is the legality of us even being able to go out to somebody's residence to say, your music's too loud, you need to turn it down, or this party that we go to, and my officer who goes by himself and he ends up going into this party of a bunch of people, and you get that individual who's had too much to drink and starts getting mousy and starts doing things and trying to impress his buddies and ends up into a fight with my officer, my officer there by himself. Well, when we go to court, the first thing that that person's gonna do is have an attorney, and every one of them does, and usually me and you are paying for that attorney. And then the question's gonna be raised, well, what legal right, Deputy Holland, did you have to even be at my client's house? Uh, we didn't. Okay, how much does that going to cost us?
I have a question, when you go out on her complaints, does that officer give her a report?
No, thank God.
That she can take, take-
No, I'll tell you why I say that, because, um, we only do reports on certain crimes, on, on crimes. If we were doing reports on every, if we had to do thirteen thousand four hundred and forty-three calls, my officers would be in the office, being paid sitting in an office typing up reports instead of out there patrolling the streets, so no, we don't care.
Through dispatch, paying, it's public, right?
I have a question, but when, when I file a claim on insurance vandalism or insurance and stuff like that, the first thing they wanna know is that report. And if I don't have that report, they're not even trying to get me.
But if there were an ordinance, there would be a report, right?
Oh, yeah, there'd be documentation.
Dispatch, it would record, it would record all that, of course, it would.
Yeah, every call we go on is CAD, it's, it's, it's a report that's done. And so there's thirteen thousand four hundred and forty-three CADs and reports done through the nine-one-one system. But officers doing reports, they don't do reports on every single one. You know, officer goes and does a, a escort from a business that's closing tonight to the, to the bank drop-off, we don't do a report on that. Officer responding to a domestic and they get there and there's no problems, it's just a neighbor calling because they, they heard somebody yelling. Officers don't do a report on that.
But that's included in the thirteen thousand?
Yeah, all that's included, that's, that's not, that's not including the other twenty-one thousand that we take at the front office of the, of the sheriff's office, that's non-emergency calls. These are just calls through the emergency system, nine-one-one, and that's where everybody calls to file noise complaints. Because it's always after five o'clock, nine times out of ten, and, and it's automatically routed to nine-one-one center.
Back to the one percent, if you go out there and ask just to turn his music down and he does, and I never call back again, that's really not, I mean, do you, would you venture to say what percent actually are repeated by some of the ones you described to us, like this lady or like the music?
The problems like that she's having, the numbers is very small, it's, it's way less than the one percent. Generally, nine out of ten of them, they, it's resolved. I wouldn't even say half of the calls are, are people doing the, let me say, let me say that again. If a hundred of those calls, twenty of them are, are from the same person, then that's just, that's just one individual, that, that problem may be solved. I'm trying to make, does that make sense what I'm trying to say there?
One individual making one call.
Yeah.
How many troublemakers are there in the county that are, this, we know one, one person that's causing her problem, how many are there?
To be honest with-
I mean, it's a handful of people we're talking about.
It's a handful, and, and most of them that are doing this are individuals that have stayed with us before. Honestly, I mean, out of a hundred, I'd say twenty or less, I mean, it's, I'd say less than twenty. But that's a, that's a guess, that's, that's all part of it. I, my, my response to, my question to my officers last night was, how often are you going out? And when you do go out, how often is it the same places over and over? And they say, if it's a certain time, I know exactly where I fix it to go to before they give me the address. Because of dealing with the same individual over and over. And we have to be careful, you know, in the old school ways, we could've set up and every time that individual come out of his house and drove down the road, we could've pulled him over and harassed him the way he's harassing his neighbors. But we can't do the, that these days, I mean, that's, that's violating his rights because he's not violating any laws. And so we can't, because we don't agree with the fact that there's not an ordinance, we can't just turn around and start harassing him. And, and so, you know, we have to be careful there.
Whatever happened to the old rule of peace and enjoyment of your property?
Whatever happened to the old rule of just being a good neighbor?
Well, I've always had people that live next door to me, I try to keep my distance, but-
Yes, sir.
Do you feel that in Macon County, with what's going on, there's a noise ordinance that needs to be in place? Or do you feel that it's gonna cause you more problems?
Um, honestly, I, I don't have an opinion there, but that's for you all to decide.
All right, one more question, are you for or against a noise ordinance?
I don't, I don't, I don't, that's, that's an opinion, and, and my job, my job, my job is to, to enforce the, the laws that there are, whether I agree with that law or I don't.
Well, I understand, but it would help me when it comes time to make a recommendation to the county commissioners as to the sheriff of Macon County says, Macon County has to have one.
That individual who lives in my county, who is being intentionally harassed and having to be subjected to the nice individual that are next door, um, and blasting his speaker twenty-four seven while he leaves town, they need some relief. However that is gonna be, I have no idea, that's you all to research and try to figure out a way. But those individuals deserve their, some relief somehow, whether that's you, the commission supporting a civil action in court to represent their community member, whatever, but they, something, that needs to be addressed somehow. I'm not saying put an ordinance in place.
But that is a civil, it's going from a civil matter to a criminal matter, is that not?
Um, it's, it's a civil violation.
But then when that person ends up not obeying the law, then they become a criminal.
They could, they could be charged with, by, uh, an offense violating a city or county ordinance.
Right, so therefore, and we brought it up the last meeting, in the state of North Carolina, there is a nuisance law. Is that, is that correct?
You can be charged with a nuisance on your own property.
Okay, so the nuisance law is-
Right, that's a, no, that's, you can be charged with a nuisance, and I don't know the exact wording of that, but you can't be charged with that or disturbing the peace on your own property.
What he was saying earlier was, basically having to hire a attorney.
Right.
You have a right to do what you want on your own property.
Right.
Robbie, one thing makes me pause when you talk about civil action, something you said, you know, these people who you're going out to talk to about playing their music twenty-four hour a day are already got a suite over at your facility there.
Some, most of them, I know.
You know, you're not, they, they've got a lot bigger issues than a noise ordinance violation in my mind.
Right.
And, and I agree, I understand what you're saying, but it helped me when you said you're still gonna go do the call. I've just gotta go upon myself to, to file the charges with the magistrate. So he's out of it, when it goes to court, he doesn't have to go, only I'm going. They're gonna tell Commissioner Haven, he's gotta show up to defend himself.
Isn't that what you're saying?
He's still gotta, gonna make the call, he's still gonna go out there and issue the warning.
But it's a benefit to the individual to be able to go to the magistrate rather than just to have to sue.
Right, and it's a benefit to him not to have to come to the magistrate because now he doesn't have to spend his four hours sitting there in front of the judge, isn't that what?
And letting it continue and coming back next month and being continued as many of our victims now, you just go back and forth to court for a year before it ever goes to court.
We used to throw it out.
Sometimes throw it out.
But John, that's what Peggy was talking about a few minutes ago with, um, her tenant was complaining about this, well, before you could actually make a call, they're gone. Well, if I am a troublemaker for my neighbor, I'm gonna turn my music up, I'm gonna give them twenty minutes of it, knowing it's gonna take a deputy. him twenty minutes of it, knowing it's gonna take a deputy twenty-two minutes to get there, I'm gonna turn it back, as soon as the deputy comes, the music's off, how is it?
But if you file a complaint, they didn't record that, whatever, for all the ensuing occurrences.
Yeah, I can still take you to court. I, it'd be documented, I called him, he came out at what, but-
And you probably didn't-
This little phone right here can timestamp, you can do a lot of magical stuff.
But you could've taken it to court when it started?
No, you can't. There's not a law right now to take it to court.
Civil.
Civil, sue, and that's where you're gonna end up anyways, and then the county taxpayers are the ones that's gonna be footing the bill for tying the court system up.
But, but wouldn't you have more to stand on i- in the court if there was an ordinance that you can't play music? I mean, just to go sue, yeah, you can go sue somebody, but-
Oh, yeah, if you had an ord, if you, if you had an ordinance and they were in violation of the ordinance just based on whether the judge believes me or the other individual. And if I've got proof that he's doing it-
Civil is a much more complicated-
And the judge is gonna-
Well, I mean, I understand completely, but the thing is, several years ago, I had a neighbor that left for work at one-thirty in the morning. I sleep with my windows open, he cranks his truck up at one-thirty in the morning, it wa, it, I woke him by that noise every single night because I slept with windows open. So, what did I do? I went and got an air conditioner and put it in my window so I didn't have to be awoken by that, John. But you put an ordinance in there and everybody, it gives me a right to complain against anything that you do that bothers me.
But that's not unreasonable.
Yeah, but what I would, what I would say to you there is, again, I'm not saying for or against an ordinance, what I am gonna say to you is, please don't start the boombox ordinance, and please don't start that because I cranked my truck up at one o'clock this morning or four o'clock this morning, and left fifteen minutes later-
Maybe I am.
There shouldn't be anything in an ordinance that would be a violation of the ordinance by having that. It should be unreasonable, it should be-
Right, but-
Times and long-lasting, last thirty minutes or hour-long or fifteen-
You know, I just, I just see it in Highlands, we brought it up about Highlands, and the jack brakes and, and blowers and lawn blowers and chainsaws and, and everything else, and I mean, it gets to the point, no, I don't wanna be sitting in my vacation home listening to somebody run a chainsaw for twelve hours. That is a nuisance to me because I'm on vacation.
I would say you're unreasonable then if you're-
It's unreasonable, and it gets unreasonable, jack brakes, I mean, it's a safety-
No, I'm saying you would, I would be saying you're unreasonable to say that that would be considered a nuisance-
Right.
To have to listen to that, that's what I was saying. I wasn't saying it's unreasonable for you to run a chainsaw.
Right.
But I think that's stuff we could talk about when we, if we get to that phase, and I think that's a legitimate conversation to have.
And the time that it happens, normal sleep times.
Well, most people aren't running their chainsaw ten or maybe twelve times.
And then most of your officers have that exception to the rule.
I mean, and every one of these ordinances talks about unusual or excessive, you know, starting your truck is not unusual or excessive.
But it woke me up.
But then it would, still wouldn't be covered by this, 'cause nobody would say starting your truck was unusual or excessive.
But that was my problem. I mean, it would be no different if you had a dog barking outside your window all night, that is a nuisance to you. A nuisance to me may not be a nuisance to you. So, it goes on and on and on and on, and, and go back to when the Highland School was being constructed and everything, and all the complaints that went in, um, for those contractors over there, people coming in for the weekend, and, um, and they didn't wanna hear that, but the people had a job to do. So, it, it's a, it's a wide picture there, and it's nothing to shed light on anything that this poor lady's living through, but you're having to deal with the total county citizens as a whole picture that will give me the right to complain about anything that you do. I like to shoot my guns, whatever. You don't like people to shoot guns, so you're gonna complain about it. Well, then I'm in violation for doing something that I like.
Does anybody have any questions, any more questions directed at the chair?
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
And I'm glad it's you and not me.
You, I'm sure you've already offered, but do you have any suggestions for this lady that you're pushing?
Uh, we've had plenty of discussions. Yeah, I mean, no, I mean, yeah, we've had plenty of discussions, she knows where I stand. That's between her and I, I don't think we need to discuss that here. But we, but yeah, and I would tell her the same thing I've told lots of people. And I've also included that and let the commissioners know, and they, they've done that, um, but...
I have a suggestion.
Hey, you been careful your own camera.
No, it's nothing really. See your homeowner's insurance, 'cause you may have coverage for your lawyer there.
Don't be cranking your music while you live too close to them.
Yes, Donna?
Thank you so much. When your officers come out, do they go next door, the fourth door, that are pissing out those, you can't do a thing to me, there's no noise ordinance. So, when you're working with a mentality like that, it's very difficult. Hopefully, the conversation you and I had about an hour ago, maybe will take.
I got a question. Go ahead. Now, I heard something about, um, Highlands, that, um, the complaints that come on down, is that, is that what I heard?
I don't think he knows that for sure.
I don't know that for sure, but when it was first, they, they started a noise ordinance four, five, six years ago. At first, in the newspaper, they print all the reports-
Whole bunch of them.
And you would see it fairly regular. I don't see any noise complaints anymore.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not a promise. Don't you think if there was a noise ordinance, nu, noise nuisance ordinance, to where, um, that it was getting habitual? So, he's sending his police officers out on each call, boom, 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 and, and they're going out anyway. If they were out four, five, six times to the same place for the same thing, don't you think that if they were to be given tickets, like you get a ticket, a fine, uh, for driving too fast on the highway, same kind of ticket? So, don't you think after a couple of tickets, this dude would cut it out?
But you have to have proof, I think.
And proof is good. Everyone's got cell phones-
They can take pictures and, you know, whatever.
So, then I would think that the thing would start-
A reasonable person would think if they had to stop, you're correct. But sometimes they don't care. I mean, they come in and out of our jail for other things.
They ain't got money to pay their rent, they're out.
Unfortunately, Karen wasn't able to be here, that's a present of concern. She had a gentleman who lived above her that liked to go out and shoot this gun all night long. But it was getting pretty bad as the guy was getting drunk. Your officers went over there and told that man, that if he does it again, he's going to jail, and he never shot it again.
That's because for my officers to have said that, I could only assume that they found that he was shooting that gun in an improper or unsafe manner. He was drunk and he was impaired, and so, they're absolutely right.
It worked.
But they can't go out there and tell him, tell him stone-cold sober that, "You're playing your music too loud and you're driving the neighbors crazy, and if you do that again, I'm gonna take you to jail because you're violating his rights," and we can't do that. And we're on the verge, I honestly feel like we're on the verge of intruding on their rights when we go to a location that we're coming there to ask you to turn down your music, um, because it's too loud, when there's no ordinance or no right that we have to do that. And if they tell us to get off of our property, and they have, they have told us, "There is no noise ordinance, and I want you to leave my property now," and we do.
Okay, so, board, will we, wanna talk to county attorney before we go any farther? Do we want any idea from the animal control?
I think so.
Some numbers from them?
I'm sure, I'm sure that if you, if you talk about a noise ordinance, you have to speak to birds and dogs and things like that, I think.
Of course, that's if you want to, you don't have to, when you do a noise ordinance, you only include what you want to include.
Wouldn't you think the number of dogs, that barking dogs are a lot more than the neighbors playing the music and all that, if you look at it?
Well, it'd be worth finding out.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think you're right, I think you have an obligation to, we serve that. And I can, I can actually provide that information to you, I can get that information.
I got a question on that. Do you have much of a complaint of animals out in the county?
Uh, thanks to my five commissioners, I don't have any complaints out in the county on animals because-
The county has a-
We get a call, we call animal control.
Okay. Could I ask for a, a minute or two to address the board too? Or maybe a few minutes more than that, I'll try to make it quick. First of all, Sheriff, thanks very much for you coming here, and I like what you said about giving people the right to go into magistrate's office and file a solace in this situation, and I think it cut down on time. And speaking of money, I believe that might be a little bit cheaper way out if they were charged a fine. The other thing I would like to do is thank each and every one of you for what you do, and, uh, I would've been here at the last meeting on this. Mr. Tate had to be out of town 'cause you had a death of a friend. Well, Al Wilkes is a maintenance man for me in the evening that I was coming to meet and his sister passed away too, it's why I didn't make it. But anyhow, I thank every one of you as much as you know about me. I'm a very strong advocate of citizens' rights. If there's any bad disputes there, I wanna see a hand. I've stood up for freedom in, in every way. I wanna be able to see people go out and shoot the gun if they want to, if it's safely and they're not putting a target up here and kids playing on the other side, and people that's safe's not gonna do that. I want to see people, if they wanna have a dog kennel outside the city limits, and those dogs barking twenty-four hours a day and that's their property to do it. Maybe that's going a little bit far out on what I'm saying. And this is up to you folks to come up with, or whatever we do. But just as much as I wanna see people to have the right to do what they need to do with their property out here. This lady right here has the right to go to bed and go to sleep at night. And it's not just in the past few weeks that we have had people coming to the board and complaining about music. That's one of the reasons why I asked the sheriff what it did about the dogs barking. But the majority of the complaints that we have had over the past couple of years is people calling, or people coming up to seeing the commissioners, or coming to the board with people that's playing music all night long till the neighbors can't sleep. And I think that I would not be an advocate, advocate for the citizens' rights if I ignore hers. And so, I personally think that if we had some little something, this person that you're talking about knows what could happen, it'd be very easy to stop that. And those other ones that's intending on it would know it was there in the very same way. At the same time, I'm not interested, and, I don't know, maybe after three weeks, it won't, it won't matter what, I'm interested in only being here. And if I've done a good job, fine, you know, if not, I'll go hunt me a house, I've got a choice to make on that. But anyway, what I would like to see is something that's put together to take care of a problem of people just like this lady here, and she's not the only one. As you well know, we have had lots of them. I think that if it was stated that some way it's not a natural cause of the problem, water rushing off a waterfall sounds good to some people, aggravates another. Like he was talking about the truck that been aggravating him, at least he done something about it. But it's sorta hard to, when you're sitting there, or you're laying there in the bed at night, and these people over here with boombox or music turned wide open. Now, I have the recipe for that, and I don't know, maybe I might not give it here, but I always go over there at four-thirty in the morning when I know they're about to sleep, and I turn mine wide open too. And I tell them, "Well, I'm up stirring." Or I had somebody one time playing Hispanic music all night long in the neighborhood, and I ask them why they done that, and they said, "Well, it was their heritage." Well, it's been a long time since a lot of my folks come from England, I guess, but I went up here to the Scottish Museum, and I bought me one of those, uh, disc up there that plays bagpipe music. And I bought two speakers about that highway flea market off this old boy, and I went right in front of that Mexicano's house, and I put Amazing Grace on and turned them both wide open, and I said, "There better not be nobody coming near that car right there," and I left it all weekend long. Well, there's ways that you can do that, but is that civil? Is it nice? That's been a long time ago. But I think if we had something that was fair, enough that we could help these people, and especially untie the sheriff's department so when they went out there to try to do something, they're not in a violation, as the sheriff described here or so. And a lot of what we always hear as commissioners from the people of all this problem, I think if there was something at the very least you could do on music, from midnight to daylight, that's when the majority of the people sleep, but there again, that's gonna have to be something that five commissioners agree on. I wanted to throw my two cents worth in where I see it, and I respect whatever you've come up with for us to look at, and we can tweak it or adjust it or talk about it. But this person here has got just as much right as that person out there that's got cattle, and every morning about daylight, those cattle are out there moving and running up through the pasture. So, trying to cut somebody off from having a party, I don't do it myself, but I'm not saying that. I think you have a party in the middle of the day or in the evening or whatever, and even if the music was a little bit louder and aggravating at four o'clock in the afternoon, well, most everybody's not sleeping, there could be somebody that works nights, you have come over. Biggest problem we've got out here, friends, is a new day, Donna and Peggy, is disrespect is what it is for the neighbors. If I had a dog that I felt like was causing your problem, I'd take care of doing that myself, you know, I'd bring it in or do whatever. But people today does not have respect, and there is where that we have got a problem that we're all having to look at. And I thank you just for your time and let us speak, and I appreciate all the incentive you're on this board.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Appreciate you.
Okay, next meeting.
So, Chris, we'll try to do, Ron's gonna do animal related, or we're gonna do that-
Yeah, he's gonna get it to Matt.
And we're gonna get Chester too.
What exactly is it that you want? You want the number of calls-
Yeah, I, I don't think you expect, in the worst, like Ron's talking about, when you speak with noise issue and, and with dogs, that's been a-
But that's, but that's, but that's what you're wanting is-
I'm just really-
How many complaints on-
How many complaints?
I just want to know if it's one less one percent, or if it's ten percent, or whatever, you know.
In the county?
You're talking about animals and noise to get to mind?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I say dogs, but that's my strong thing, but whatever, you know, I know one of these ordinance uses birds or something.
Or you're giving it to other animals. So, I just need that ordinance.
Give this break down.
Well, they go to bed at night, though, leave the, leave this, that'd be, that's a bad bird, fuck.
Yeah, but they want to be cows.
Like most of theirs far away from that, they don't bother you.
I don't know if there are any ordinances based on what we've been talking about tonight of not of the law enforcement officers, as you do, but would you be able to see if you could find any examples of, of that sort of thing where the people would-
Probably by Chester, see what he, and we'll see what he can come next month, this will have it.
And, and because of that, it may fall back on us, and that's why I feel like it would be inappropriate for me to give an opinion. And that's why I feel like it would be inappropriate for me to give an opinion on whether to have an ordinance or not have an ordinance because a person may think that I'm biased when I do something or I issue a citation against you for the violation of the ordinance, or I don't issue it. The other person could say, well, you were at the planning board and you said you didn't agree with an ordinance, that's why you didn't charge him with the crime or charge him with the violation. And so that's why it's always best for me is, and that's why judges, you won't get judges to respond to their opinions on that. And I feel like I have to do that too, to protect myself and my officers.
So I think the goal of the next meeting is talk to Mr. Jones and then decide if an ordinance would be feasible for this board to do and then come to the commissioners to kind of share our findings and get some new direction.
Agreed.
If we could find out if it can be handled, if the magistrate gets going into the court because the magistrate, you filed a complaint, five days, you could go in and have your hearing and there's the first judgment. It's like I usually have to do. But that would make a big, big difference in which way we win on this, from my opinion, would be different.
Phil Chester up.
And I'd like to find that out as soon as we can, even the email would be great if the magistrate can handle that type of complaint.
That kind of big, small claims or something?
Small claims. I don't, I don't know the extent of what they handling, what they're doing. I know it's quick and easy, and they're good. Those boys are very good.
Okay, so the next meeting date is Thanksgiving's on the twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Our twenty-sixth, is it twenty-eighth?
Yes.
It's Thanksgiving.
Twenty-seventh.
Sorry, next meeting's the twenty-eighth. I was making sure the twentieth wasn't Thanksgiving.
Twenty-seventh, twentieth.
Yeah.
At four o'clock.
That's national, huh?
The twentieth. The twentieth.
If you need to come the twenty-seventh.
Motion to adjourn?
So, second.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all for coming out tonight.